In the last week, we have been giving a little prayer for the last 4-5 days. All the friends and relatives of you who have been sleeping in the same room, all the friends and relatives of you who have been sleeping in the same room, we hope that our lives will be good. Let's start with this prayer. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. May your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. May all the blessings of your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. May the Lord bless you and bless you. May all the saints and saints be with you. May the Lord be with you and bless you. May your Lord be with you and bless you. May the Lord be with you and bless you. We will pray for this prayer.
Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. May your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. May your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. May your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. May your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. May your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. May your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year.[453.84][453.84][S02. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year.[458.40][458.40][S02. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year.[463.04][463.04][S02. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year.[467.60][467.60][S02. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year.[472.08][472.08][S02. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year.[476.72][476.72][S02. Good Lord, may your presence and goodness be with us in this time of year.
We have been talking about this for 2-3 weeks. Good Lord, may your peace and mercy be with us in this time of year. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your beloved God be with you, may your children be saved. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your beloved God be with you, may your children be saved. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. May your heart be healed, may your soul be healed. May your prayers be answered, we are praying. Amen. 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 In this time of year, we have been sleeping in the same room. Our three friends, our sister and brother. We hope that our lives will be good. Dear brother, we welcome you on behalf of all over here. Over to brother's side.
Okay, thank you very much. Very happy to see all of you again today.
If you are not familiar with me, I will be glad to meet you.
We must believe that God is a good God all the time.
We must believe that God is a good God all the time.
And all his plans for us are always for our very best.
Our problems are always there for our success.
Sometimes we cannot understand it.
Some times we cannot understand it.
Just like our small children when they are five-six years old, cannot understand why the parents are asking them to do some things.
When our children are 5-6 years old, some people don't understand why they are doing some things.
You take your child to kindergarten on the first day when they are 3-4 years old.
When your child is 3-4 years old, do you clean up the K G U K G?
It will be crying.
That child will cry.
But you leave them there.
However, you clean up the K G.
The child does not understand why mommy is leaving me here to cry.
The child doesn't understand why mommy is leaving me here to cry.
But you are doing it for its good.
However, you are doing it for its good.
Oh, God is like that. We cannot understand why he allows us to go through trials of where we have to cry.
God is like that. We cannot understand why he allows us to go through trials of where we have to cry.
But if underneath we always believe, my father is always got my good at heart.
However, we believe God is always good. God is always good.
He planned the very best for us.
Our problems are always there for us.
I want to show you a verse in that connection in Jeremiah 29.
I read that verse in Jeremiah 29.
In verse 11, Jeremiah 29:11.
I read that verse in Jeremiah 29.
I know the plans I have for you declares the Lord. Plans for your welfare, to give you a future and a home and not for calamity.
When you say that, I know what you are saying. They are saying that you are going to die.
So, it's a wonderful thing. God says he's got plans for our life.
We believe God is going to die.
Just like you make plans for your children from a young age to go to school.
You are saying that you are going to die.
That later on you have some plans for them to go to college or to open some place where they can get a job.
When you say that, you are going to have a good career.
Until then as father and mother you sacrifice so much to feed them and clothe them and spend so much money for your children.
You are doing some things for your children.
So then we must remember what Jesus said. If you being evil, know how to give good things to your children, how much more your heavenly father will give good things to those who ask him.
Yes, I will remember what Jesus said. If you are doing some good things for your children, I will remember that you are doing some good things for your children.
We must never forget that.
I will never forget that.
That God is always planning for our best.
We must believe that you are doing some good things for your children.
Like our children can't understand, children can't understand their parents, sometimes we also may not be able to understand God's ways.
If you are doing some things for your children, we believe that you are doing some things for your children.
So please remember this verse in Matthew 7 and verse 11.
Read that verse in Matthew 7:11.
If you being evil, know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will your father who is in heaven give what is good to those who ask him.
If you are doing some good things for your children, I will remember that you are doing some good things for your children.
So you know what I learned from that verse.
What do you think about that verse?
That the best father on earth is evil compared to God.
A great saint who is with God is with you.
See, most of us here are good fathers.
You are the good fathers.
Work hard, sacrifice for your children.
You are doing some good things for your children.
But compared to God even you are an evil father.
However, you are the good fathers.
That doesn't mean you are evil. It means God is so much better than you. That's what it means.
You are not the good fathers. However, God is better than you.
If you get one out of hundred to be a good father, God gets hundred out of hundred.
If you are the good father,
That is very important to believe in these last days.
It is essential to believe in these last days.
Because it is possible that Christians may face many trials before Jesus comes.
If Jesus is coming, Christians will pray.
Because we are, when we think of being ready for the coming of the Lord.
Do you think about that?
We must think of the warnings Jesus gave us about the circumstances in the world around us.
We should think about the circumstances in the world.
Matthew 24.
Read that verse in Matthew 24.
The disciples asked Jesus in verse 3, what will be the sign of your coming?
The disciples asked, what will be the sign of your coming?
But he says many things there.
He said many things there.
For example, verse 6, there will be wars and rumors of wars and you must not be frightened.
When you say that, you are doing some things for your children.
And then verse 9, they will deliver you to tribulation and kill you and you will be hated by all nations for my sake.
When you say that, they will kill you. You are doing some good things for your children.
What was the question? The question in verse 3 is, when are you going to come? What is the sign of your coming?
When you say that, you are doing some things for your children.
And one of the things he said is, you will be persecuted for the sake of your faith.
However, you are doing some good things for your children.
And none of us like to be persecuted. I don't like to be persecuted.
We don't do any killing.
We like to live peacefully and comfortably with other people.
We are doing some good things for our children.
But the world is under the control of the devil and it hates Jesus Christ.
However, in this world, Jesus is with us.
Because Jesus preaches holiness.
Yes, he is with us.
Tells us to be free from sin.
We are doing some killing.
All human beings love to sin.
All humans are killing.
In the midst of such a group, God has called us to be those who hate sin.
When you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
And when people hate us, we are to love them.
When you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
And when all this trouble comes in the last days.
When you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Jesus telling us how to be ready.
When you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Verse 10, at that time many will fall away.
When you say that, many will fall away.
Not few, many believers will fall away from the faith.
If you say that, many believers will fall away.
Now today he may say, I am not going to fall away from the faith. I am going to be true to the Lord.
If you say that, I will not fall away.
If you cling to the Lord like a helpless person crying out for help, then you will not follow him.
If you are very confident in saying, no, 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 I will not follow away, you will be the first person to follow him. If you say that, I will not follow away, you will be the first person to follow him. If you say that, I will not follow away,
You know, Peter really did not want to deny Jesus Christ.
Do you know that Peter wanted to be true? But he was so weak when one young girl said, you belong to Jesus and he said, no, 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 I don't know him. However, a woman who is with Jesus, she is a very faithful woman.
The great apostle denied Jesus.
You are a great apostle and Jesus has betrayed you.
Of course, Jesus forgave him.
He became a great apostle afterwards. After that, Peter became a great apostle.
We learned something from that, that we should not think that we are so strong.
We should not think that we are so strong.
So what shall we do?
What shall we do?
What I said yesterday, we must be like that branch in the tree all the time.
As I said yesterday, a leaf is always there.
Helplessly.
We should be faithful.
The branch has to say, Lord, I don't have the strength to stand true to you. Please give me the strength.
If you say that, I will not fall away.
Lord, I am a coward. Please give me boldness to stand for you.
If you say that, I will not fall away.
Give me the power of the Holy Spirit.
Give me the power of the Holy Spirit.
Even the apostles prayed for boldness.
The apostles prayed for boldness.
And you know they were being persecuted in those days.
They were doing some killing.
You need an axe of the apostles.
We are doing some killing.
That, this is the time of persecution for them.
They were doing some killing.
And when, when they all came together in Acts chapter 4.
When you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
And it says here in verse 23-24.
Read that verse in Jeremiah 23.
Went to their companions and they heard this and they began to lift up their voices to God.
They were praying.
And what did they pray?
They were praying.
Verse 29.
Read that verse in Jeremiah 29.
Lord, these people are threatening us.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Please give us boldness to speak your word.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
And it says in verse 31, the whole place was shaken and they were filled with the Holy Spirit and they spoke the word of God with boldness.
We are doing some killing. They were doing some killing.
That is written for our example.
We are doing some killing.
When you feel weak and afraid, go God and say, Lord, please give me boldness. Fill me with the Holy Spirit.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
So if there's going to be a lot of persecution in the last day, how shall we prepare for the coming of the Lord?
If we are going to do some killing,
Pray for boldness.
Pray for boldness.
Lord, I never want to be ashamed to confess that Jesus Christ is my savior.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
If they say, no, 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 he's only one of the ways. Say that there are many ways and Jesus is one of the ways.
They are saying that yes, there is one way.
Then you must say, no, Jesus said, I am the way, the only way to the Father.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
A time may come and they will persecute you for saying that.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Jesus said, there will be such persecution before his coming.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
And then we read in Acts Matthew 24 verse 10.
Read that verse in Jeremiah 24.
That many will fall away at that time.
When you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
And they will betray one another and hate one another.
They will do some killing.
He doesn't say two or three people will fall away.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Many will fall away.
They will do some killing.
Now when you read a word like that, that many will fall away, what do you say?
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
You say, no, 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 I will not fall away.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
That's what Peter also said. Even if everybody denies you, I will not deny you.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Some of you may be saying that, even if everybody falls away, I will not fall away.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
But I have learned from Peter.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
I will not boast.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
I don't have the courage, Lord.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
I am a weak person.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
When everything is peaceful, I can be very bold and shout and pray.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
When Christians are being persecuted, I don't know whether I will stand.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
So I want to be like the branch in the tree all the time.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
I want to depend on you in prayer, Lord. Help me, help me, help me.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Hey, I want to lean upon the Lord as a helpless believer.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Lord, I am just like everybody else, a weak believer.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
But when I am in you, I will be mighty with the power of the Lord.
However, I am a faithful believer.
That is how we are to be prepared for the coming of the Lord.
If we are going to do some killing.
And it also says in the last days, verse 11, Matthew 24:11, there will be many false prophets leading people astray.
Read that verse in Jeremiah 24.
See, there are people now, what is a false prophet?
Who is a false prophet?
That is someone who is not preaching the truth.
Who is a false prophet?
For example, there are some believers, some preachers who say, every believer will be healed of all sicknesses.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
But it's not true.
However, it's not true.
Even the apostle Paul was sick. He read in 2 Corinthians 12.
Read that, Paul was sick.
He read there, he prayed three times, Lord, take the sickness away, take it away.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Lord said, no, I will not take it away.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Imagine for his greatest servant who prayed for healing from sickness, God did not answer that prayer.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
He said, I'll keep it because that will keep you humble and dependent upon me.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
If you read the New Testament carefully, you will get an answer to every false teaching in the world.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
He read in 1 Timothy 5.
Read that, Paul was sick.
Timothy had a stomach problem that he never got healed from.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
I am sure Paul laid his hands on him many times when Timothy was not healed.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
But God allowed him to live until his, his planned time on earth was over.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
If we follow the Lord, we cannot die before our time. That is impossible.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
No sickness, no persecution can take away our life if we seek the Lord wholeheartedly.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Before our time.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
That time may come at, for apostle James, it was 30 years old.
When you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
But for his brother John, it was 95.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
Length of time God has planned for our life is different for different people.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
We must not live in fear.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
We must not live in fear of death all the time.
If you say that, you are doing some good things for your children.
The Bible says in 1 Corinthians 15, the last enemy that will be destroyed is death. The Bible says in 1 Corinthians fifteen, the last enemy that will be destroyed is death.
The last enemy that will be destroyed is death.
The last enemy that will be destroyed is death. So what is death? It is an enemy.
So what is death? It is an enemy.
You don't go and embrace an enemy.
You don't go and embrace an enemy.
There are so many believers that say, oh, I'm sick and tired of living on this earth, I want to die.
There are so many believers that say, oh, I'm sick and tired of living on this earth, I want to die.
There are so many believers that say, oh, I'm sick and tired of living on this earth, I want to die. If God allows me to live till a hundred, I will not wish for death.
If God allows me to live till a hundred, I will not wish for death.
I am always waiting for the coming of the Lord.
I am always waiting for the coming of the Lord.
But before that, if the Lord wants to take me, that's his choice.
But before that, if the Lord wants to take me, that's his choice.
I'm not waiting for that, death is an enemy.
I'm not waiting for that, death is an enemy.
1 Corinthians fifteen is very clear on that.
1 Corinthians fifteen is very clear on that.
I have to resist the enemy.
I have to resist the enemy.
So we are, but we won't be living, but we will not live in fear.
So we are, but we won't be living, but we will not live in fear.
The other thing is written here in Matthew twenty-four, twelve.
The other thing is written here in Matthew twenty-four, twelve.
That the, the last day is the love of many people will become cold.
That is the other thing we have to be careful about.
That is the other thing we have to be careful about. That is more subtle, so many worldly things can come into our life that our love for Jesus becomes cold.
That is more subtle, so many worldly things can come into our life that our love for Jesus becomes cold.
The love of money can come so cleverly even to rich people that love for Jesus becomes cold.
The love of money can come so cleverly even to rich people that love for Jesus becomes cold.
Nowadays, there are so many sinful pleasures on the internet that will draw people away from love for Jesus Christ.
Nowadays, there are so many sinful pleasures on the internet that will draw people away from love for Jesus Christ.
Nowadays, there are so many sinful pleasures on the internet that will draw people away from love for Jesus Christ.
Nowadays, there are so many sinful pleasures on the internet that will draw people away from love for Jesus Christ.
Then you will not be ready for the coming of the Lord.
Then you will not be ready for the coming of the Lord.
So we have to fight the battle against temptation and keep ourselves pure.
So we have to fight the battle against temptation and keep ourselves pure.
That will come only if we love Jesus supremely in our heart.
That will come only if we love Jesus supremely in our heart.
So how can I increase my love for Jesus Christ?
So how can I increase my love for Jesus Christ?
This is how we prepare for the coming of the Lord.
This is how we prepare for the coming of the Lord.
Says in the last days, verse twelve, many people's love will grow cold.
It says in the last days, verse twelve, many people's love will grow cold.
But the one who endures to the end will be saved.
But the one who endures to the end will be saved.
Endures in what? Endures in love until the end.
Endures in love until the end.
I'm warned, endure in love for Jesus Christ until the end.
I'm warned, endure in love for Jesus Christ until the end.
I want to tell you how you can increase in your love for Jesus Christ.
I want to tell you how you can increase in your love for Jesus Christ.
This is how it has helped me for all these sixty-four years of my Christian life.
This is how it has helped me for all these sixty-four years of my Christian life.
First of all.
First of all.
We can increase in our love for Jesus Christ by meditating on his love for us.
We can increase in our love for Jesus Christ by meditating on his love for us.
We read in 1 John, chapter four.
We read in 1 John, chapter four.
We love him because he first loved us, 1 John, chapter four.
We love him because he first loved us, 1 John, chapter four.
Verse nineteen.
Verse nineteen.
We love him because he first loved us.
We love him because he first loved us.
So how can I increase my love for him? I must meditate on his love for me.
So how can I increase my love for him? I must meditate on his love for me. So how can I increase my love for him? I must meditate on his love for me. So how can I increase my love for him? I must meditate on his love for me.
All my life, even now, I meditate on the cross of Jesus Christ.
All my life, even now, I meditate on the cross of Jesus Christ.
Why?
Why?
Because Jesus said in John fifteen.
Because Jesus said in John fifteen.
In verse thirteen.
In verse thirteen.
No one has greater love than one who lays down his life for his friend.
No one has greater love than one who lays down his life for his friend.
The greatest love, Jesus said, a man can show is to give his life for the sake of his friend.
The greatest love, Jesus said, a man can show is to give his life for the sake of his friend.
I was not his friend, I was his enemy.
I was not his friend, I was his enemy.
That is when he died for me.
That is when he died for me.
Now I am his friend, but when I was, when I was saved, I was his enemy.
Now I am his friend, but when I was saved, I was his enemy.
And now I want to increase in my love for Jesus, I have to meditate on his love for me.
And now I want to increase in my love for Jesus, I have to meditate on his love for me.
Jesus loved you so much that in order to save you from hell, he hung on the cross.
Jesus loved you so much that in order to save you from hell, he hung on the cross.
We must meditate on that.
We must meditate on that.
Make it personal.
Make it personal.
Not to say, Jesus loved the whole world, say, Jesus loved me.
Not to say, Jesus loved the whole world, say, Jesus loved me.
That's how I looked at it.
That's how I looked at it.
Why did Jesus go to the cross?
Why did Jesus go to the cross?
Because he said, Zacchaeus will go to hell, so I have to save Zacchaeus from hell, so I will die for him on the cross.
Because Zacchaeus will go to hell, so I have to save Zacchaeus from hell, so I will die for him on the cross.
That's what made me love him, Lord, you went to the cross because you wanted to save me from going to hell.
That's what made me love him, Lord, you went to the cross because you wanted to save me from going to hell.
That is the simple gospel we hear when we are first converted.
That is the simple gospel we hear when we are first converted.
But I never want to forget it.
But I never want to forget it.
I never want to forget that I was a sinner for whom Jesus died.
I never want to forget that I was a sinner for whom Jesus died.
I forget that, I cannot grow in the Christian life.
I forget that, I cannot grow in the Christian life.
See, when you go to the kindergarten, you learn the alphabet of your language, say Tamil language.
See, when you go to the kindergarten, you learn the alphabet of your language, say Tamil language.
But even if you are hundred years old, if you want to grow, you must not forget that alphabet.
But even if you are hundred years old, if you want to grow, you must not forget that alphabet.
So we must not remember, we must not forget also the love Jesus had for us, which is, which we begin our Christian life.
So we must not remember, we must not forget also the love Jesus had for us, which is, which we begin our Christian life.
Like the alphabet, we must never forget, otherwise we will never, never be able to learn anything.
Like the alphabet, we must never forget, otherwise we will never, never be able to learn anything.
Like the alphabet, we must never forget, otherwise we will never, never be able to learn anything. So ask the Lord to show you more and more of his love for you.
So ask the Lord to show you more and more of his love for you.
And the second thing is to remember how much Jesus has forgiven us.
And the second thing is to remember how much Jesus has forgiven us.
See, in Luke's Gospel, chapter seven.
See, in Luke's Gospel, chapter seven.
There was a prostitute who came and poured out expensive perfume at Jesus' feet.
There was a prostitute who came and poured out expensive perfume at Jesus' feet.
All the money she earned, she bought an expensive perfume and poured it at Jesus' feet.
All the money she earned, she bought an expensive perfume and poured it at Jesus' feet.
Now, in the Old Testament, there was a law, that what you earn as a prostitute, you must not bring into God's house.
Now, in the Old Testament, there was a law, that what you earn as a prostitute, you must not bring into God's house.
That is what the man who invited Jesus in Luke chapter seven said, see, if this man was a prophet, he would know that this is a sinner, Luke seven thirty-nine.
That is what the man who invited Jesus in Luke chapter seven said, see, if this man was a prophet, he would know that this is a sinner, Luke seven thirty-nine.
He will know that Moses said in the law, prostitute cannot bring his earnings to the house of God.
He will know that Moses said in the law, prostitute cannot bring his earnings to the house of God.
Jesus was so compassionate to that woman that he accepted that offering.
Jesus was so compassionate to that woman that he accepted that offering.
And then he told Simon, the one who invited him.
And then he told Simon, the one who invited him.
See, this woman was forgiven much, that is why she loves much.
See, this woman was forgiven much, that is why she loves much.
But what is her?
But what is her?
But you have, you think you have been forgiven little, that's why you love little.
But you have, you think you have been forgiven little, that's why you love little.
That is the second way our love can increase.
That is the second way our love can increase.
Recognize how much Jesus has forgiven us.
Recognize how much Jesus has forgiven us.
And some of you may think, you're not such a bad sinner.
And some of you may think, you're not such a bad sinner.
I'll tell you something, nobody has been forgiven little.
I'll tell you something, nobody has been forgiven little.
All of us, I, you, everybody, we have been forgiven much.
All of us, I, you, everybody, we have been forgiven much.
We must love much, love Jesus much in these last days.
We must love much, love Jesus much in these last days.
So what is the first, is we meditate on how much Jesus loved us.
So what is the first, is we meditate on how much Jesus loved us.
And then secondly, meditate on what a great sinner you are and how much Jesus forgave you.
And then secondly, meditate on what a great sinner you are and how much Jesus forgave you.
And that is what Jesus said, then we will endure till the end and we will be saved, Matthew twenty-four, verse thirteen.
And that is what Jesus said, then we will endure till the end and we will be saved, Matthew twenty-four, verse thirteen.
And that is what Jesus said, then we will endure till the end and we will be saved, Matthew twenty-four, verse thirteen.
Now, I want to be happy with that.
I want to be happy with that.
I want to be happy with that.
But don't be happy with that.
But don't be happy with that.
I've been going to meetings for sixty-four years.
I've been going to meetings for sixty-four years.
I'm not happy with that.
I'm not happy with that.
Oh, Jesus, I want to love you more than I ever loved you till now.
Oh, Jesus, I want to love you more than I ever loved you till now.
I want to die to myself more and more and more.
I want to die to myself more and more and more.
I want to sacrifice more and more for your kingdom.
I want to sacrifice more and more for your kingdom.
I want to pour out my life for your service, even at this age.
I want to pour out my life for your service, even at this age.
I want to go anywhere, do anything out of love for you.
I want to go anywhere, do anything out of love for you.
Remember the warning of Jesus, many people's love will grow cold.
Remember the warning of Jesus, many people's love will grow cold.
Lord, I want to keep the fire burning in my heart.
Lord, I want to keep the fire burning in my heart.
So I want to show you something in the one first episode of John.
So I want to show you something in the one first episode of John.
One John, he's talking about when the Lord comes.
One John, he's talking about when the Lord comes.
On chapter two, verse twenty-eight.
On chapter two, verse twenty-eight.
Now here, when he says little children, he's talking about John is ninety-five years old, he's speaking to those believers in the church.
Now here, when he says little children, he's talking about John is ninety-five years old, he's speaking to those believers in the church.
He's saying, little children, be ready for the coming of the Lord.
He's saying, little children, be ready for the coming of the Lord.
He's saying, little children, be ready for the coming of the Lord.
Carefully.
You believers.
You believers.
Jesus comes.
Jesus comes.
Some people will go up with boldness.
Some people will go up with boldness.
Others will shrink away and go away from him.
Others will shrink away and go away from him.
Is he talking about unbelievers?
Is he talking about unbelievers?
No, he says little children.
No, he says little children.
Telling you believers, some of you will shrink away when Christ comes.
Telling you believers, some of you will shrink away when Christ comes.
I learned something from verse twenty-eight.
I learned something from verse twenty-eight.
Be ready for Jesus coming.
Be ready for Jesus coming.
There'll be two categories of people when Christ comes.
There'll be two categories of people when Christ comes.
Unbelievers. One who will say, yes, Lord, I'm so happy you've come, I'm ready to meet you.
One who will say, yes, Lord, I'm so happy you've come, I'm ready to meet you.
Another group of believers will shrink away.
Another group of believers will shrink away.
Oh, Lord, I didn't know you're coming so soon.
Oh, Lord, I didn't know you're coming so soon.
Everything in my life, I have not said right, please wait, please wait one year or so, don't come so soon.
Everything in my life, I have not said right, please wait, please wait one year or so, don't come so soon.
Which category are you going to be in? If Jesus comes today.
If Jesus comes today.
By twelve o'clock today afternoon.
By twelve o'clock today afternoon.
Which category will you be in verse twenty-eight?
Which category will you be in verse twenty-eight?
By the end of this meeting.
By the end of this meeting.
If Jesus comes.
If Jesus comes.
Will you be ready?
Will you be ready?
Just because you came here doesn't mean you're ready.
Just because you came here doesn't mean you're ready.
Is there any sin on your conscience?
Is there any sin on your conscience?
Any sin that you have not confessed and forsaken.
Any sin that you have not confessed and forsaken.
Are you watching any dirty pictures on your phone or your computer?
Are you watching any dirty pictures on your phone or your computer?
Are you going to finish with it now?
Are you going to finish with it now?
Going to pray and say, Lord, deliver me from this habit completely today.
Are you going to pray and say, Lord, deliver me from this habit completely today?
Is there any money that you have borrowed from somebody that you have not returned?
Is there any money that you have borrowed from somebody that you have not returned?
Are you trying to return it?
Are you trying to return it?
Are you hoping that he'll forget about it?
Are you asking forgiveness from those whom you hurt?
Are you asking forgiveness from those whom you hurt? Husband and wife, are you earnestly praying that you will never raise your voice against each other at home?
Are you earnestly praying that you will never raise your voice against each other at home?
It's such a common thing among believers.
It's such a common thing among believers.
I plead with you, please pray that God would put an end to it in your family.
I plead with you, please pray that God would put an end to it in your family.
Lord, I never want to raise... Lord, I never want to raise my voice at my wife or my husband, pray like that.
Aandavare, naan orubodhum, enne kaanavudathile, aladu, manavudathile, naan satthata ivirtamatte, naan moruthakudadaendru, apriyavidamaha jebiyungal.
I want to be ready for your coming.
Aandavare, ummude varike, naan ayathama irukavirundugare.
Don't want to fight over little things in the house.
Vittile irukaradu, sirusiru kariyungalika, naan sundepodan, naan virmavillai.
God, let me ignore these little mistakes that people make.
Janangal sayiradu, sirusiru, tavurigale, allan, tavirtuvida, naan avilay, asattisayidu, enne kodavi sayum.
Another question.
Inno oru kaili.
Are you preparing your children to be ready for the coming of the Lord?
Aandavare varike, ummude pillaihale, ayathapaduthalavala irukirila?
We have to teach them, they're not going to know it themselves.
Naam orulukka kapikavendu, avarala, ahve, avakattukalappu, mudiyavillai?
In your home, you must tell your children, Jesus is coming back, be ready to meet him.
Ummuviittile, ummule pillaihale, thiridu, ningal chullavendu, aandavars seekrama, esu seekrama varappogurara, ningal avare, sandikayathapadavendu, indhu pillaihale, kuchullaavendu.
All you little children who are here listening to me right now.
Indhe kudiirikara, sirupillaihale, enne ipparikundurukara, sirupillaihale, ningal.
I want you to pray, Lord Jesus come into my heart.
Aandavara esuva, enudhey irudheythile, varum, endru jebikumbidu, ungal kettare.
And pray that right now while we are speaking.
Naam ipparadu, pesikundurukumbadu, ipparadu, ningal andh jebathay sayungal.
Silently in your heart, you children.
Amayidiyaha, ummude irudheythile, pillaihale, ningal andh jebathay sayungal.
Say this.
Idhaisolungal.
Lord Jesus, I'm sorry for the sins I committed.
Aandavara esuva, naan seyyada paavungalikurithu, naan varuthamadigare.
I'm sorry for disobeying my parents.
Ummude petrolulukka, kiltpadiyamar, poonathikurithu, naan varuthamadigare, aandavare.
Sorry for telling lies.
Naan poysonna kariyungalika, varundukare.
Sorry for cheating in the examination.
Naan thairu vililile, naan kaapiyaduthu, naan eemaathindukaka, varundukare.
Sorry for cheating in other things in my life.
Ummude vaalkale, machakarangal, naan eemaathina kariyungalika, naan varuthamadigare.
Sorry for fighting with my brothers and sisters at home.
Vittile, enudhey akka, annan, thandi, kambigaladathile, naan sundepodadukaka, naan varuthamadigare.
Lord Jesus, you died for my sins.
Aandavara esuva, neer enakkaha, enudhey paavungalika, marithi.
Children, say this.
Sirupillaihale, andh jebathay solungal.
In your heart.
Ummude irudheythile, solungal.
Lord, I want to be a new person today.
Aandavare, naan indhanaliile, naan pudhum, manushana, manushiana, irukavirundugare.
This meeting is over.
Indh kuttham, mudiyavadukumbadaha, naan maravirundugare.
I want to become a child of God today.
Indhanaliile, naan devanudhey pillaiyay, naan maravirundugare, aandavare.
Please come into my heart.
Esuva, enudhey irudheythukulaha, varum.
Pray this prayer, Lord Jesus, fill me with your Holy Spirit.
Aandavara esuva, ummude pershutthaviinalay, enne nirappamendru, andh jebathay sayungal.
Being filled with the Holy Spirit is not only for older people, your children can be filled with the Holy Spirit.
Pershutthaviyanaala, nirappaduvadu, periyavulukka maathramal, ningal sirupillaihale, kooda, aviinalay, nirappadamudiyum.
Jesus loves to hear the prayer of little children.
Esu, sirupillaihale, jebikarajebathay, kettakamihavum, avala irukara.
This is how you can be ready for Christ's coming.
Ippritan, sirupillaihale, ningalum, aandavare varike, ayathama irukamidhum.
I, I don't want to miss you all when Jesus comes again.
Esu, thirumamah, varumbadu, ningalallam, kaivadapadavirundu, porudain, naan virmavillai.
You all sitting here and I must see you all also in heaven when Jesus comes.
Esu, varumbadu, sirupillaihale, indhe ukanthirikara, ningal illaram, palavathile, eduthukolappadavendu, indhavadi, naan virmugare.
You pray, next time you are tempted to fight with your brother or sister, you pray, Lord Jesus, help me.
Ummude sagodrasagoladathile, arutamari sundepodumbadu, ningal sodikapodumbadu, aandavadathile, jebiyungal, aandavare, enne, maatram.
In school, when you're, when, in school, when you're tempted to cheat in your examination, you say, Lord, help me not to cheat.
Ummude, pallile, thairu, irudumbadu, ningal kaapiyadikka, ningal sodikapodumbadu, aandavare esuva, enne kodavi sayum, kaapiyadikka, kudada, eemaathukada, indhu, jebiyungal.
Any problem you face.
Ningal sandikari, endhovaru, prashniyadhalam, sari.
Children, when you're sick, you pray, Lord Jesus, heal me.
Sirupillaihale, ningal yaadi paduthumbadu, aandavara esuva, enne sudupaduthamendru, jebiyungal.
If you lost something, you say, Lord Jesus, please help me to find it.
Edavadu, tolitthavittirindhal, aandavara esuva, edhikandupadikathik, enne kodavi sayumendru, kailangal.
I want to see a revival among the young children in our Tamil Nadu churches.
Namudi Tamil Nadu sabaila irukaradana, namudi sirupillaihale, thirudal, oru yirupadhal, varavendu, indhu, naan virmugare.
Because God can do miracles among you.
Indhal, devan, ungal mathile, arputamalay, sayamidhum.
I want you to be ready for the coming of the Lord.
Aandavare varike, ningal illaram, ayathama irukavendu, indhu, naan virmugare.
One, one John two twenty eight.
Unru yovan, irundhiyirupaththi yadavat.
Some will boldly say, yes Lord, happy you're coming.
Oru silla, daiyamay, aandavare, neer varigaridhanal, engalikasandoshamendru, chulavarkal.
Some will shrink away and shame and run away, oh Lord, I didn't know you're coming so soon.
Meru silla, vetkappattu, aandavare, neer evramaa seekrama varirindhu, thiriyavillaiye, soli, vetkappattu, ooduvar.
I want to say one more thing.
Inno oru kariyatiam, naan ungal chullavirundugare.
Jesus once told a story in Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty five.
Esu, orumare, mathayu yirupaththi yadavatle, oru, kadaiyachunna.
That is particularly about being ready for his coming.
Adu, kurippaha, aandavure, varike pachina kariyam.
He's going to Matthew twenty five.
Mathayu yirupaththi yadavatle, thirukukundalay.
Then we read that Jesus told a story about the kingdom of heaven is like ten virgins who are waiting for the bridegroom to come.
Angi, aandavara kadaiyachunna, parloharajum, madavalan, kederukundupoga, purappattu, patthu, kanniigalikopai, irukamendhu sonna.
That means, there's a picture of Jesus coming.
Adu, esu varige, andhodu, sithram.
And here is a picture of ten believers, they are, I know, how do we know they are believers, they were all virgins.
Indhe, patthu, visvasiladey, kudithaadana, oru sithramirukaradu, avargal, kanniigalikopadappadukrakal, ee, avar visvasiladey, endru chuligaro, indhal, avar kanniigalikendru, solappattukral.
Five were unbelievers, we'd have said five virgins and five prostitutes.
Adle, ayindu pair, avisvasiladey, irupparalindra, adle, ayindu kanniigal, ayindu, vesikalendru, soli, soli, solappattuk.
Ten virgins.
Illai, angi solappattu, illarame, patthu, kanniigalik.
But at the end of the story, five could not go into with the Lord.
Anaal, andh, sambho, andh kadainudhey mudivile, ayindu pair, aandavaru, sella mudiyavillai.
Some believers aren't ready for the coming of the Lord.
Silla visvasiladey, aandavuride varike, ayathama illai.
This is a very important parable.
Idhu mihavum, mukkiamana, oru omay.
So try and understand why these people were not ready.
Ahave, indh janangal, ee, ayathama illa, indhavadi, purindukolavam, murchiingal.
Okay, let me tell you, you'll understand it now.
Naan ungalakachillutum, ningal, appudu, ungalakupuriyum.
First of all.
Mudalavadu.
Verse one, all the ten had lamps that were burning.
Unramasana thile, andh patthu pairum, erindukundurukara, teevatti, prithukundurudakal.
Lamp is the light that shines from our outer light.
Andh teevatti, andh, vilakke, indhu, namudi, vilipraharmana, vaalkay, idhu, vilichamay, illarukum, thirikaradu.
Jesus said, let your light shine before men.
Aandavara sonna, ummude, vilicham, manusharukum, illarukum, prahasikakadavandhu, indhu sonna.
That is your external testimony.
Adu, ummude, vilipraharmana, oru saachi.
I think most of you have got a good external testimony, praise the Lord.
Ummude, perumbanmianan, ummukka, vilipraharmanam, nalasachi, irukaradu.
Nice, good testimony in the church, good testimony in your neighborhood, praise the Lord.
Sabaila, nalasachi, akkambakthar, mathile, nalasachi, katturukustotram.
Because you've got good elders in CFC churches, CFC have got a very good testimony.
CFC, sabaila, ummulekka, nalamuparil, irukabidinale, CFCla, irukarjanangal, nalasachi, irukaradu.
Our external testimony is good.
Namudi, vilipraharmana, saachi, nalasachi, irukaradu.
Even people in other denominations will say that.
Vili, stamanangal, irukavulum, kooda, namai paartha, apriyachulla, mudiyum.
But five of them, we read, took some extra oil in a flask, verse four.
Anaal, naanga, vasana thile, butthi, olol, thangal, teevatthi, olodukuda, thangal, pathangal, enne, illim, kunduponarkal.
That means they had a bottle inside their pocket with oil in it.
Ammude, porul, enna, indhal, andh teevatthi, odum, seethu, thaniyaha, thangaludhey, pocketle, konjam, enne, botllay, eduthukunduchandha.
Why did they take that?
Ee, nadu, avar eduthuchandhaari?
If this lamp dies out, they can pour some oil and keep burning.
Indh teevatti, erindu, anindu, poiivittal, andh enne, konjam, poochiy, edh, pattra vayikamidhum.
Now see this picture now.
Indh sithrathay, ningal, parindal.
What is this external light that everybody can see?
Unru, machav, illaram, kaanakudiyavilipraharmana, saachi.
And the other is a bottle of oil which is in their pocket that nobody can see.
Inno, ammude, pocketkula, vaitthirukaradana, machav, yaarmee, paarakku, kudada, oru, enne.
Five did not have it, five did not have their extra bottle.
Ayindu pair, andh, ugriyaha, andh, enne, avarulathila, illai.
What is this a picture of?
Idhu, edhikuritha, oru sithramay, irukaradu.
Light, the lamp speaks of our external testimony everybody can see.
Andh teevatti, anadu, illaram, paarakku, kudiyavil, namudi, vilipraharmana, saachi, kurikaradu.
And the hidden bottle speaks of that hidden life inside that nobody can see.
Andh marivay, vaitthirundan, andh pathrathin, enne, yaarum, paarakku, kudada, namudi, ulanana, jeevathay, kurikaradu.
There are many hidden things in our life.
Namudi vaalkale, aneyak, marivana, kariyungal, irukindana.
For example, how you behave at home, the people in the church don't know how you behave at home.
Udharanamaha, ningal vittile, apriyandhukuligare, indhavadi, sabaila irukara, yaarukum, thiriyadu.
They all see you in the church, your lamp is burning.
Avarillam, ummule sabaila, paarkarakal, ummude, teevatthi, erindukundurukaradu.
How you are behaving with your wife or husband at home, they don't see.
Ningal vittile, ummule kaanavunodu, manavyo, yappadi, nandhukuligare, indhavadi, avar, paarakaradu, mudiyavillai.
That is your hidden life.
Adu, ummude, marivana, vaalkay.
That is important.
Adu, mihavum, mukkiam.
The other thing is your thoughts, nobody can see your thoughts, even your wife cannot see your thoughts.
Inno oru kariyam, ummude, sindhey, ummude, ennan, ummude, manavya, kooda, ningal, enne, yosikirikalendru, indhu, kandupadikamidhyadu.
Keep your thoughts pure, that is the vessel of oil.
Ummude, sindhey, pershuttamay, kaathukolungal, adu, than, pathrathile, irukaradana, enne.
So we read here, when the Lord came.
Indhe vasikrom, aandavara, vandhapadu.
Only those who had that extra oil could be ready for his coming.
Andh, enne, vaitthirundan, avar maathram, than, avarudai, varike, ayathama irukamidhu.
The others were left out.
Avar, kaivadapaduthu, vittarkal.
I want to have, read the whole thing, you read those first thirteen verses of Matthew twenty five.
Mathayu yirupaththi yadavatle, mudal, padhimunchu, vasanagale, vasipirindral, ungalakadu, allapuriyum.
Five people could not be ready and could not go in with the Lord.
Ayindu, naburka, ayathama illa, irukamidhu, illai, aandavaru, avarla, fogamidhu, illai.
Because they had a good external life but no purity in the inner life.
Indhal, avarukka, vilipraharmana, nalasachi, irundum, avarukka, ulanana, oru, pershuttamana, vaalkay, illadhrindhanale.
Oil is a picture of the Holy Spirit.
Enne, anadu, pershutthaviyano, oru, adyalamay, irukaradu.
The Holy Spirit keeping the inner hidden life pure.
Pershutthaviyano, namudi, ulanana, marindrukara, andh jeevathay, pershuttamay, vaitthirukara, kariyam.
Keeping our thought life pure.
Namudi, sindhey, vaalkay, pershuttamay, vaitthirupadu.
What do we learn from that?
Adhalindhu, naam, ennatvathik, katshukoligaro.
Ready for the coming of Christ.
Kristu, mudiyavare, varike, ayathama irupadukku.
External testimony is not enough.
Vilipraharmana, saachi, adu, poodumana, dalla?
Inner hidden life is important.
Ullanana, marindrukara, kudiyavil, andh jeevan, jeevanam, adu, mihavum, mukkiamana.
Pray to God that you will keep your external life and your inner life pure.
Ummude, vilipraharmana, vaalkayum, ulanana, vaalkayum, pershuttamay, kaathukolavendu, indhu, aandavadathile, jebiyungal.
Let us bow our heads in prayer.
Naam, talagale, taathithi, jebikala.
Please bow your heads.
Ummu talagale, taathithanjal.
Please think about what you heard today.
Indhanaliile, ningal kettakariyungale, kurithu, yosithuparindal.
Is there something you have to settle in your life?
Ummude vaalkale, sari seyyavendhi, kariyungal, innum, edavadu, irukarada?
Say, Lord, help me to settle it soon.
Aandavare, seekrama, sari seyyadu, enne kodavi sayumendru, jebiyungal.
And Lord, forgive me my failures.
Ummude, tholvihale, allam, enak manniyam, aandavare.
Help me to watch my inner life.
Ummude, ulanana, jeevathay, naan gavnitthu, paarakku, kodavi sayum.
Help me to meditate on your love for me.
Neer enmir, vaitthirukaradana, anba, naan, dyanikay, enne kodavi sayum.
Help me never to forget how much you forgave me.
Neer evramaa, enne, manneethirikari, indhavadi, orubodhum, marandhuvadadukka, enne kodavi sayum.
And even if I cannot do great things for you, help me to love you with all my heart.
Ummukendran, naan, periyakariyungal, sayamidhu, vittalom, enudhey, uzhuridheythima, enne, nesigay, enne kodavi sayum.
Help me to endure in love for you until the end.
Udivuparayandam, ummeedhirkaradana, anbilay, naan nilaitthirukka, enne kodavi sayum.
God Jesus, I want to be ready for your coming.
Aandavara esuva, ummude, varike, naan ayathama irukavirundugare.
You for hearing me.
Ummude, jebathay, kettaduka, amukka, nandisalathikare.
Amen.
Amen.
Now brother Victor has asked my wife to share something for the young girls and sisters here.
Savar Victoravari, enudhey, manavy, indhe irukaradana, ilam, sagodrigalakum, sagodrigalakum, silla kariyungal, padhundukulambadu, kettirukara.
He told me she does not like to speak in a meeting where there are brothers and sisters.
Sagodrigalum, sagodrigalum, irukara, kutthathile, peshavirundugare, indhu, sagodri, solirikara.
So I told her, Victor told you to speak to the young girls and sisters, you just speak to them.
Ahave, savar Victoravari, ningal, ilam, pendalakum, sagodrigalakum, peshavendu, indhu, kettukundurukara, indhu, kettukundu, ananal, enne, manavy, enne, kesiavu, thanthukara.
So I'll ask her to come and speak now.
Appudu, sagodri, vandhu, peshamidha, naan kettare.
Praise the Lord.
Katturustothram.
I'm so happy to see so many beloved brothers and sisters on the screen here. And we look forward to the time when we can be with you all. Hmm, in many Christian churches, the husband and wife are like pastor and assistant pastor. And I don't want to be like that. I want, I know that the brothers are the ones who are building the church. Our job as women and sisters is to build our homes. And to be a helper to our husbands at home. But I want to obey brother Victor and share a few things. I was reading in Hebrews chapter. Brother, would you like to read it in Tamil?
Yes.
I often think of these two verses in my life. To run the race looking unto Jesus. Very often we as sisters are tempted to look at other people, other sisters. We are tempted to look at how other sisters are dressing, how others, they are bringing up their children, things like that. And we are tempted to judge them. And, and sometimes we are tempted to look at the worldly things and the cares of this world. And those cares can pull us down. Or the fear of the future, we can think about that and that can pull us down. Or we can look at others and see how wonderful their life is and live, our life is not so pleasant, we are having more suffering and we discourage. That is a common temptation for all of us sisters. But thank God that Jesus has given us an example to follow. Here he says, let us run the race looking unto Jesus. Let us not look at anything else but look at Jesus. And before I used to think, look at Jesus means, uh, read the Bible and meditate on Jesus, that is good. And spending more time in prayer, that's also good. But here we read, look at Jesus who endured the cross. That is what we learn in our CFC, praise God. We look at Jesus who endured the cross, he is our example. What is the cross in my life as a wife and as a sister? What did Jesus do throughout his life enduring the cross? He always said, father, not my will, but your will, that was the cross. It was the theme of his life, not my will father, but your will father. And that should be the theme of our lives to dear sisters. We may think, I don't want to do like this, I don't want to live in submission, I don't want to live all these strict rules. I want to do my own will. That's how worldly sisters talk about doing their own will. But we thank God for the example Jesus has given us. But then the cross is not a heavy and hard and difficult thing. It's a joyous thing because he says, for the joy set before him, he endured the cross. When we take up the cross and we say, Lord, I want to do your will, not my will, God gives us joy in our heart. And more and more as we follow the Lord, that joy increases more and more. I want to take up that cross every day of my life. And experience the joy which I can get from Jesus alone. We have very little time left, dear sister. We just now heard that the Lord's coming is very near. So let us go to the seed and take up the cross and follow the Lord. May the Lord help each one of us.
Yeah, brother Victor, you can please take over, thank you.
Nam, eluvay nammudhe. Sahodhini nuddhe nam, dear sisters, sahodhini nuddhe. Munna levaru thirukku, evvelu tayakkam, evvelu yosanai. Praise Allah. Nam, epdi arange pandrathun untaakun uddi le, analoo, oh. Meeting, keele, sisters, brothers, so, tour meeting arrangement, na, na, arrangements pandrathu konjoo customer, what do you get the, than, thank you, thank you, then, I'll, kettu, evvelu tayakkathoodu. Um, evvelu yosanay odukooda. Manathal, meyay. Orsela wartegali soli, ame urchaapaduthene, nammudhe, arumiyana, avikriya sahodri, anya oralaka, nammudhe. Dear sister, thank you sister, sir, thank you. Indho. Ningal, ningal sonnudhu bole, indi, Kristo gula, muluvudum. Pastor, assistant pastor, abdingarana, ulagathin mathi, epdi oru, munmadriye, epdi oru. Uh, munodigale, or renner saha, niyendalakirundu, engli, uangludhe, trichavali, uangludhe, waldkina, la, la, asurathirukkri, evill, ela, nanga, irudithil, vaitvaitvukkro. Ummudhe wartai, sandoshathinudhe, raksayam, arumiyano, orle, ammudhe, paadukkile, paadukkile, odi, yaar, sandoshaparam, diyadu, obathrothali, paadukkile, sandoshankadu, siluweile, da, sandoshankas, siluweile. Siluweile, avumanathile, vibaridhitile, adhala, unnno, sandoshanle, sandoshay, eddala, rikka, abdin, tanat, munbaha, irukkada, da, da, unudhe, samukham, en, sitanle, daave, umde, sitan, seyrathu, da, adh, siluwe, edukkarathu, da, sandoshan, adh, sandoshathil, na, na, perugano. So yes, we, no, keen, amselvom, endesoli, namai, urchaapaduthene, ammudhe, sahodrikana, nandisal, thurum, um, arumiyasa, orakal, kaali, na, ketta, divyamane, avikriya, cherripu, the meeting. Balnoor mani. Indha, indha, orhain, buludhu, anduva, he, Kristo, oruvar, varana, the meeting, mudi, buludhu, oruvar, anal. Nam etanave, urchaamai, varu, anduva, in, so, daiyamai, sandoshathodan, mikravakal, etanave. Ayu, na, edirbakle, na, edirbakle, epdi, evlla, sikrama, anduchingale, inna, na, saturate, pandavendi, karangal, ketchukma, arke, vidavendi, karangal. Nam, evill, ela, irudithil, vaitvaitvoo, idhuku, da, nam, manadu. The conference, no, no, ka, adhuku, da, ayit, paduthu, thudhuke. Anduva, na, vidavendi, karangal, sarisayevendi, karangal, yes, we, na, nesikke, vendi, karangal, our, mundi, anbu, hundha, vidam, yes, we, namadathil, mundi, and, anbu, hundha, vidam, kalvarin, udhe, anbu, na, evlla, manikke, paduthukre. Eddala, na, nam, namdhi, ambe, na, menes, mudi, perugum, mudi, namdhi, paathrathinudhe, ulana, jivyathil, hidden life, la, paathrathil, na, menes, thakra, butti, ulla, kandhingala, iruppo. Adhaka, ven, dharathal, na, poras, puti, shakapadukkro, so, devan, namkthay, ane, illa, alosnegale, na, na, tannadu, urukra, nette, thano, the kaali, illum, sahur, mulamai, na, ketta, illa, wartegali, kana, nandisal, thurum, na, sahur, kana, na, sahur, kum, sahur, kana, nandisal, thudukooda, na, our, mudalavu, na, yaavu, irundanindru, na, our, 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 de, worldkika, our, de, sari, the, suka, pelanuka, our, de, apishayathu, ka, our, ne, varshangal, ne, varshangal, irundan, mane, ne, ne, uruk. Our, de, wartainal, evlla, vaay, na, challenge, pandabattu, Lord, let me, love me more, na, inna, umdathil, na, adhikam, arukku, inna, na, sacrifice, pandu, inna, na, gospel, kudukku, praise Allah, we should be, challenge, nam, saval, vada, padukkro, priyam, orle. The eighty, moon, eighty-four, way, the, inna, na, adhikam, umme, na, nesikino. Inna, na, sacrifice, pandu, and, anbin, na, nereindurukun, sir, inudhe, inu, oru, irudhi, Krist, vesmile, da, and, anbin, na, pati, eri, thakada, sand, the, bar, barom, and, the, sahur, nuplak, irukkada, and, the, akini, namai, pati, pidi, pada, sar, me, and, the, sahur, mail, devan, de, akini, the, apishayam, our, mail, irukthakada, di, a, is, na, our, ne, ne, uruk, aswadama, iruk, our, de, play, ka, our, de, kudumaglu, ka, pair, play, ka, na, yaavu, kattare, na, stotri, po, ellar, en, daave, me, na, thudikro. And, am, tagap, ne, ngudi, mutta, sahur, kai, amanduva, ngudi, sahodri, kaha, na, lume, stotri, kro, tagap, ne, anduva, in, the, kadasi, na, tannal, e, ngul, kutha, vi, ane, divyamane, wartegali, war, the, ngul, kub, bodikro, ambe, das, rukai, chavikro, anduva, a, ingle, a, a, ayit, paduthukrathu, na, na, la, ayit, thukai, me, na, thudikro, avya, na, or, na, tannadu, ingle, thurulam, thukkada, stotri, kro, na, vekka, padu, po, ha, vadi, ki, amanduva, ambe, ambe, na, lal, brad, bela, na, lal, thirukka, thakada, engle, challenge, pandu, uttama, sahur, sahodri, ni, parsutthavina, apishayipiraa, umbe, a, vin, varankal, na, ne, 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 sar, intuk, kendi, suka, bela, tha, ne, 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 anduva, anduva, apishayam, wallamai, apishayam, wartai, aswala, our, de, sandhadi, no, de, sandhadi, sandhadi, no, de, irukkavai, na, chavikro, anduva, melapaduthu, melapaduthu, anduva, sudati, belanai, thandu, aswadi, chavikro, our, de, ministries, ellavu, chup, play, ministries, aswadi, piraa, na, chavikro, anduva, oru, manap, padu, na, nandisal, thurum, stotri, kro, anduva, ura, we, thar, the, rachagro, anduva, he, Kristo, wallam, ikka, namathil, chavikro, na, la, pi, da, ve, amen.
Amen.
Nam, yaavu, nam, ambe, sahur, it's out now, it's empty, thank you, brother, thank you, sister, thank you, thank you, thank, thank you. Okay, brother, thank you, thank you, sister, thank you, thank.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank. Nam, amarvavu, oru, nam, oru, or, patthi, nimmida, idai, 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 vellu, uh, the, vi, anu, or, kail, ninga, wait, allah. Eppudu, uh, namdhi, erandavu, eh, andha, session, moondraavu, session, anadu, adh, kudumbakudukai, enbadanal. Ellarame, ekla, so, fa, family, session, enbadanal, husband, wife, abdintu, mattu, ninga, inne, kavenda, appri, irukre, ellarame, abde, ekla, oali, play, sirup, play, as it is, uh, devan, de, wartai, nam, ellarku, nam, kadandu, oru, main, na, am, solti, na, visvasipavu, or, patthi, nimmida, idai, vellu, parade, portal, paru, buludhu, ninga, ulavu, buludhu, ulan, buludhu, kettukurukum.